All right, we'll call this meeting to order. As many of you know, this is a rescheduled meeting from last week when we were forced to adjourn. The Board has discussed, and we will continue in this blended model where the Board and invited presenters, the executive team are here in person and all public participation, including public comment, will be virtual. We're going to continue that until the entire district moves to a masks optional level based on our current policy, which is itself based on community spread. So when we have CDC levels of low community spread, we will have, once again, in-person participation at the Board meeting for the public when masks are optional. Until that time, we'll be meeting in this format. We welcome, of course, everyone to join us online and to share public comment from there. Let's now get on with our meeting for the evening. Maida, are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes.
And if you would please take a roll call.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordean?
Here.
Commissioners Er?
Here.
Thank you. Those who are willing and able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move to the adoption of the agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Move to second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Our next segment is recognitions, and for that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordean, Commissioners, Student Board Representatives, Executive Team members, and administrators. Just wanted to share two items for recognition this evening. First off, Governor Evers and State Superintendent Underly, their visit to DeLong Middle School on the first day of school, Wednesday, September 1st. We welcome Governor Evers, the State Superintendent, State Representative Jody Emerson, State Senator Jeff Smith, and Board members Dr. Lori Becca and Dr. Marquell Johnson on the first day of school. The Governor visited three districts around the state on that first day. We were so honored to be one of the three chosen. The visitors got to participate in some learning. They wanted to do that, and our staff delivered. Kaylee McGinnis and Jeremy Traynor, I'd like to thank them for their willingness to provide for the State Superintendent and the Governor. No pressure there, but the kids enjoyed it, and I know that the adults really enjoyed it, too. Staff members and leadership team at DeLong, thank you very much, as well as Communication Specialist Terry Piper-Thompson. In recognition for your efforts in organizing the special event, providing just a fantastic learning opportunity for everybody, and the small gifts of hospitality were a really nice touch to the guests. Less than three weeks later, we had the United States Secretary of Education kick off the return-to-school road trip at Locust Lane Elementary on Monday, the 20th. You know, it just seems very hard to believe that we would have these dignitaries just in the span of three weeks, but U.S. Secretary of Education Dr. Miguel Cardona, along with Deputy Secretary of Education Cindy Martin, kicked off that return-to-school road trip at Locust Lane. And the secretary and guests, including yours truly, and Board members Dr. Nordean, Dr. Becca, Josh Clements, and Phil Lyons toured the school, visited Ms. Colleen Gallagher's first grade and Mr. Michael Poplinsky's fourth grade classrooms, participated in a pep rally in the parking lot with our Locust Lane students, staff, and members of the North High Marching Band. Just wanted to acknowledge all that the students and staff had done at Locust Lane last week and slightly before in preparation, they made that event possible, to Denise Schwartz, Locust Lane music teacher, North High band instructor Scott Henziak, for a tremendous start to the pep rally. And our District Technology Department for their efforts with the event for making the livestream possible. Chad Hydon is with us tonight. Thank you, Chad. Our Buildings and Grounds crew for their hard work. We also had some special cookies baked for our honored guests who enjoyed the bus, thanks to North High Culinary Arts Teacher Renee Moorhead and her students. Finally, Principal Vang and Communication Specialist Terry Piper-Thompson should be commended. This was a tremendous and very unique amount of organization and planning in a very short time. When I was alerted to this three to four weeks ago, I wasn't, I didn't quite understand what goes into this. I was not aware that this truly is not our event. This is something scheduled by the federal government, and it's closed to most, it's a private event. When you have five Secret Service agents there, you know that it's somewhat serious, and you're not going to ask, well, could so-and-so come? But anyway, when we were contacted, we said absolutely. And, you know, your staff, Principal Vang, they were just informed of the specifics on Friday, and they really put together a tremendous program. This, once again, it wasn't open to the public, but the attention to safety and security from the Secret Service, as well as the Eau Claire Area Police Department, we're really proud to share how Eau Claire has safely reopened our school. So, once again, I'd like to recognize both of you and your schools. Thank you very much.
Each citizen wishing to address the Board can, is allowed to speak for up to four minutes, and the Board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Our first speaker tonight for our public forum is Lori Plackeyworth.
Hello. As you know, this is Lori Plackeyworth. I live at 2229 Williams Drive, Eau Claire. There's quite a number of topics and concerns of which I wrote comment on, and as I began preparing that statement, I was led to pray, and that prayer grew in volume. Then it occurred to me that prayer is actually what needs to be heard tonight more than anything. So at a later time, I will bring up my other point. At this point, dear Father and Creator of all things, you are love, and without you there cannot be love. Please open all the hearts and minds of parents, administrators, teachers, and Board members who lovingly see each other through your perfect division for us. We all agree to the common purpose of teaching and protecting the children, but let us remember that they are actually God's children for whom He has allowed us to care. Help us to honestly and fervently seek your will, Father, for your children. Your word points us to the truth of what this common goal should be, because after all, what good is it to gain the world and yet forsake souls? We speak mainly of worldly issues in these meetings, but your word warns that the wisdom of this world is foolishness and that the wise of this world stumble over your true wisdom and power. Therefore, we argue. Help us to not be motivated by selfish ambition, but rather by lifting one another up to see your cross of salvation. Let the joy of that truth unify us in bringing your children up in the way they should go so that when they are old, they do not stray. Lord, you have blessed our nation with much prosperity, knowledge, and power. With these things come great responsibility to be passed to our future generations. You, God, have instituted governments and families to implement your will. Help parents, administrators, and teachers to focus on the education your children need in the areas of core academics while protecting them from the distractions of ever-changing cultural philosophies, perversions of truth, and social unrest. Because without putting you first, all else fails, Father God. We ask that you cast out all malice, open all eyes and ears to truth, and put your protective hedge around your children. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maggie Vennepal.
Good evening, Superintendent Johnson and School Board members. Thank you for hearing my comment, and I hope to see you all in person again very soon. I want to tell you about my daughter's first two weeks of school. The first day of school, bam, close contact quarantined. Now follow me here, because you really can't make this up. My daughter's close contact, close contact was a vaccinated student who was in close contact with a positive neighbor. She was tested on Monday, August 30th, and since no symptoms, proceeded to attempt it, to attend school on September 1st, pending her test results. This student's positive test result came back after lunch, and now my healthy child and others missed nine days of school. South was amazing, as always. I had conversation with Trevor, and he tried his best to answer my questions about the distance and the time, but one question he couldn't answer, and still no one to this day has been able to answer, is how was a child pending test results allowed to come to school? I was told I could not provide an antibody test to school to show my daughter had COVID previously and natural immunity to get her back to school sooner. Why not? Natural immunity has always been stronger than manufactured immunity, and with breakthrough cases on the rise, the science now supports this for COVID, for the COVID shot as well. My daughter had to do her first nine days of seventh grade from home, and it was not fun. She struggled with the new laptop, she struggled with finding things online, she struggled with being able to teach herself, and this was all with me working 100% from home and able to help her. I cannot imagine what kids are going through who do not have help. In June, I did an open records request, asking the district for how many close-contact-quarantine students and staff ended up testing positive for COVID in the 2020-2021 school year. I was shocked to find out that there was no record kept of what happened to students' staff after they were put on close-contact quarantine. Zero. None. I quote, "We do not have any documentation of positive cases linked directly to being a close contact of a positive case while in a school setting." The updated numbers today show 50 positive student cases in 946 students' quarantine. I ask you why? For a mitigation strategy that we have zero idea if it was even effective last year. What we do know is that it kept, it kept our students from learning, it increased the amount of Fs, and it decreased the amount of As our students received in 2020-2021. To quote Principal Madsen, "If last year showed us nothing, it showed us that students need to be in school with their teachers five days a week." I know you can all see, keeping healthy kids out of school is not in the best interest of their education. Following the CDC, the DHS, and the Health Department guidelines is not working anymore. Many districts across the state have made their own protocols based on what's best for our kids and have foregone the advice of politically motivated health officials and organizations. We, the parents, are begging you to change the protocol and allow our healthy kids to attend school and learn. As always, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. That ends our public comments section of the evening. We'll now move on to our reports. I don't believe that budget development has met, since the last meeting, is that true?
Budget development has a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Thank you. So then we'll move directly to the Legislative Liaison, and that is Dr. Johnson.
The Wisconsin Association of School Boards announced that October 3rd through 9th is Wisconsin School Board Week. The theme this year is "School Boards Serve with Heart." This special week is a time to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected board of education plays in our communities. Additional information can be found on the WISPA website. On Tuesday, September 28th, the proposed calendar for the Assembly Floor includes several K-12 bills, including a bevy of new unfunded state mandates, some of which are very prescriptive. The following bills will be considered: Assembly Bill 378, Making School Districts and School Financial Information Available to the Public; Assembly Bill 411, Anti-Racism and Anti-Sexism People Instruction and Anti-Racism and Anti-Sexism Training for Employees of School Districts and Independent Charter Schools; Assembly Bill 435, Incorporating Cursive Writing Into the State Model English Language Art Standards and Requiring Cursive Writing in Elementary Grades; Assembly Bill 446, Reading Readiness Assessments and Granting Rule-Making Authority; Assembly Bill 488, Requiring School Boards to Make Information About Learning Materials and Educational Activities Used for Pupil Instruction Available to the Public; Assembly Bill 561, Requiring School Boards to Report Information Regarding Credit Recovery Courses; Assembly Bill 563, Required Instruction in Civic Education in the Elementary and High School Grades; High School Graduation Requirements and Requiring the Exercise of Rule-Making Authority; Assembly Bill 564, Reports Concerning State Agency Expenditures of Federal Coronavirus Relief Funds and Allocating Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Funding for Grants to School Districts, Independent Charter Schools, and Private Schools for Mental Health Programs. On September 16th, the following bills also received a public hearing in the Assembly Education Committee. Assembly Bill 562, this bill requires each school board of a school district and each operator of an independent charter school, before providing any program related to sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or gender expression to a pupil in the school district or attending a charter school, to give notice of the program to the pupil's parents or guardians. This notice is required with respect to a pupil in any grade before such a program is provided to the pupil. Assembly Bill 563, this bill requires the DPI to promulgate rules to develop a model curriculum and instructional materials for grades kindergarten through 12 on civic education to prepare pupils to be civically responsible and knowledgeable adults. The Federal Department of Education recently released two guides to help schools and families respond to harassment and discrimination based on gender, sexuality, nation of origin, and immigration status. The guides, confronting anti-LGBTQI+ harassment in schools and confronting discrimination based on national and immigration status, inform parents what steps they need to take if they believe their child has been subjected to discriminatory action or is being harassed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll now move on to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. For both consent agendas, the Board votes on the items there with one vote without discussion. If any member of the Board would like an item pulled out for the consent agenda, they may ask for it to be done. Tonight's Superintendent's Consent Agenda contains one item, Human Resources Employment Report. I would hear a motion to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Agreed.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you. We'll now move on to the Board's Consent Agenda. The Board's Consent Agenda has Minutes of School Board Retreat, September 8th, 2021, and Minutes of School Board Meeting, September 13th, 2021. I would hear a motion to adopt, to approve the Board's Consent Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you. We'll now move on to our Focus on Results segment of the evening. I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson and his team to get us started there.
Good evening. Tonight, the title is Strategically Using Data in an Equitable Multi-Level System of Supports: The Focus on Social and Emotional Learning. We learned quite a bit, you know, over the past, probably since April and May, after we had shifted to the coherent governance model and with the results specifically, and we had focused mainly on academic achievement. Very fortunate tonight to have had our Board Retreat on September 8th to get a little bit more feedback about that, to kind of hone our skills a little bit. This evening, Manny Van Vliet will be present, as well as some other staff, to be sharing this presentation with us tonight.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Superintendent Johnson, and staff and community members that have joined us virtually. My name is Manny Van Vliet, I'm the Executive Director of Special Education, and I'll be starting us off here tonight. So tonight, we are sharing with you how we are strategically using data in an equitable, multi-level system of support, focused on social and emotional learning. But before really digging into specifically how we are using specifically social-emotional learning, we thought it would be helpful to share with you the bigger picture in how social-emotional learning, as well as information from other presentations, fits into our vision and the direction we are hoping to go as a district. We wanted to create that overall picture for you so that you can see how all of the pieces will fit together. As I begin with Eau Claire Area School District's story, it's important to know where we have been in order to understand where we are going. In 2017, Eau Claire Area School District was identified by the Department of Public Instruction of having a disproportionate overrepresentation of multirace and Black students in areas of special education. After completing an extensive cause analysis, we determined our system did not meet the needs of all of our students, and we did not have equitable services, practices, and resources in place to meet the needs of all of our learners. A district team examined multiple resources, reviewed research, studied evidence-based practices, and implementation science, and as a result, the framework you see on the screen was developed in 2018 and adopted into Board Policy in the fall of 2020. Eau Claire Area School District's Multi-Level System of Support is a leveled approach to meeting the needs of all students. Our framework conveys a vision of an integrated system of behavioral, social, emotional, and academic support, includes all educators and all learners, considers the whole child and system, and attends to equitable access, opportunity, and success. Schools and districts can better meet the needs of every learner when policies, programs, and practices, roles, and expertise are aligned and coordinated into an interdependent whole. The system's approach of an equitable, multi-level system of supports enables schools and districts to proactively provide the most effective instruction and supports that learners need. We are approaching the implementation of our EMLSS systematically by carefully considering the importance of each level. I'm going to briefly take you through how our system is designed to meet the needs of all learners. The first and most likely, most important, is our foundation. Just like a house, when you don't have a strong foundation, the rest of the home will be weak. The components on the left hand, so right in here, organizational structures, strong shared leadership, positive culture, and family and community partnerships are what we call our foundational components. Careful consideration and planning of each of these four components are key in creating a sustainable, equitable system. When missed, implementation science tells us sustainable practices will not be created. Also note, equity is at the foundational level. Creating equitable services, practices, and resources through these four foundational components is how we create sustainable systems that will meet the needs of all of our learners. This school year, we are focusing on creating a strong foundation of our EMLSS. Moving on to the next level, universal, or Tier One, is the instruction that all learners receive. Here, all learners experience good-first teaching based on high academic standards and behavioral, social, and emotional expectations in an environment conducive to learning. These features, these gray boxes down the side here, include collaboration, guaranteed viable curriculum, high-quality instruction, balanced assessment, and family engagement. These four terms, right down the side here, monitoring of progress, strategic use of data, differentiation, and supportive learning environment are the practices we want to implement at the universal level. Successful implementation of these key features and practices will create a strong universal level that will meet the needs of most students. However, even with a strong universal level, some students will need more. Selected, or Two Tier, include, or Tier Two, includes supports intended for learners whose developmental, academic, behavioral, social, or emotional needs extend just beyond the reach of the universal level. This level is intended for short-term intervention targeting the specific skills, needs of learners. This includes not only our students that are lacking a skill or not meeting benchmark, but also for students that are exceeding and needing more and different, beyond differentiation in the classroom. You can see these key features and practices are similar as in Tier One, but they are targeted to meet the needs of our students. Layering on another layer, some students will need even more than Tier Two. Intensive, or Tier Three, is intended for learners who needs extends well beyond the reach of our universal or Tier One. Students may require an intensive intervention and find success, or may result in qualification for services like special education, English language, or talented and gifted. Once again, you will see the key features and practices, yet at this level, they are much more individualized. It is important to note, both Tier Two and Tier Three are within the universal level, regardless of a student's needs. We want to create a supportive learning environment over here in the universal level, where all students have equitable access and opportunity within our universal level. In a healthy system, at least 80% of learners have developmental, academic, behavioral, social, and emotional needs met through the universal level of support. So you will see that represented here. We want to strive to meet 80% of our learners through universal. In a healthy system, 15% of our learners will require that Tier Two, meaning they need additional support in addition to the universal level. In an effective system, only 5% of our learners need access to Tier Three, and this is what we are striving for, as this is a sustainable system. So how are we doing? One measure we can use to help us better understand the health of our system is student outcome data. On the screen, you will see three years of ELA forward results. You can see a comparison of our district to the state results. So for example, this first bar, right here, is our district results in 2016, 2017, and how we compared to the state. And you will see 17, 18, the district compared to the state, and then 18, 19. The bar on the right-hand side represents the goal of the data we might see within a healthy system. Forward results representing this type of graph would tell us we are meeting the needs of many students through our system. Our data here shows we are performing higher than the state, but not even 50% of our students are being successful on this measure. Looking at our math forward exam results, we'll share a similar story. The bar graph on the right-hand side is what we are striving for. Once again, this bar graph over here, showing that breakdown of 80% of our students being successful at that 80% mark. By looking at our district's forward results in math for three years, tells us that 50% of our students need something more and different than what is provided in the universal level. So I'm going to go back one slide here. So as you can see, Eau Claire Area School District has areas of growth. So where do we go from here? What do we do? I'm bringing you back to the, back to the beginning on sharing with you what our story is. Our goal is to create a system where every learner has access to the resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education, despite their race, gender, gender identity, ethnicity, language, disability, family background, or income. As a teaching and learning department, we have begun developing a multi-year action plan that will support the systemic change that is needed to improve the health and sustainability of our system. This plan will be monitored for progress, and student outcomes will be established. Every building has been in the process of developing a school, with action steps and measures to move us closer to a leveled approach that meets the needs of every student in every building. Equity is at the root of everything we are doing to ensure access and opportunities will be created for every student. I hope this gives you the picture or story of the important work we are doing as a district. This will take time, commitment, intentional focus, and care for not only our learners, but also for our staff as we create systemic change. Next, we are sharing with you an example of this work and how we are strategically using data to improve our system. Our focus tonight is on social-emotional learning, and I'm going to pass it off to Michelle Radke, Director of Assessment.
In order to be able to effectively braid academic and behavior data, behavior in our classrooms, the district analyzes SEL and behavior data. The district is committed to hearing the voice of students, staff, and families. In the spring of 2021, the Eau Claire Area School District collaborated with DPI to deploy a school climate survey. The DPI has made surveys available to districts to assess the climate or environment of schools within the district. These surveys are used to measure the perceptions in the following areas: discipline, cultural, and linguistic competence. discipline, cultural and linguistic competence, academic and social emotional supports within a district. The district, this perception data was used as one of multiple measures during the July-August data retreat days with system leaders to help create district and school goals and future action plans. We had 2,121 families respond to the survey, 3,236 fifth through twelfth grade students, and 874 staff responses. During the system leader's data retreat, all perception data from the surveys were reviewed, but for this presentation, the data for the questions surrounding social emotional learning and the health will be highlighted. When surveying families, perceptions around the social emotional questions were very positive as shown by the blue and the orange bars, with all questions having at least seventy percent strong agreement or agreement. The highest agreement percentage was eighty-seven percent of families either strongly agreed or agreed with the following statement. The school encourages students to take challenging classes no matter their race, ethnicity, nationality, or cultural background. There were thirteen percent of families who either disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. The lowest agreement percentage with seventy-three percent of respondents strongly agreeing or agreeing was the following statement. The school helps me figure out what social emotional skills my child needs to develop. Kaiying and Lisa will be highlighting later in the presentation, the action steps counselors will be working on to address this area. When surveying students, perceptions around the social emotional questions and agreement level decrease. There are a couple to highlight on this slide regarding the social emotional work the district is committed to. Eighty-nine percent of students believe that people of different cultural backgrounds, races, or ethnicities get along well at the school. There was also eighty percent of students that strongly agreed or agreed with the statement, my teachers care about me. Other areas that had over seventy percent agreement where teachers are available when I need to talk to them, and adults working at the school treat all students respectfully. An area where students had most disagreement in these seven questions was seventy-eight percent of students reported strong disagreement or disagreement with the statement, my teachers make me feel good about myself. On this slide, the agreement level moves to more students in disagreement than agree. The ones with the highest disagreement level are eighty-nine percent of students disagree with the statement. If I am absent, there's a teacher or some other adult at school that will notice my absence. The statements that have over seventy percent disagreement are I feel like I am a part of the school. I am happy to be at the school. Students at the school get along well with each other. I feel like I belong, and students like one another. Later in the presentation, Kaiying and Lisa will also talk about the organization organizational structures they are creating to adjust this or to to address this data. When surveying instructional staff, there was more agreement around the perceptions for the social emotional questions asked in the survey. The areas with close to ninety percent agreement where the school emphasizes showing respect for all students' cultural beliefs and practices. The school encourages students to take challenging classes no matter the race, ethnicity, nationality, or cultural backgrounds, and people at the school care about me as a person. Eighty-nine percent of staff were in strong agreement or agreement, and whereas when we look at the families, eighty-seven percent of families were in agreement with that same statement. The school encourages students to take challenging classes no matter their race, ethnicity, nationality, or cultural background. So there was a correlation there. The statement with the lowest disagreement was I feel comfortable discussing feelings, worries, and frustrations with my supervisor was seventy-five percent strongly agreeing or disagreeing or agreeing or strongly agreeing or agreeing, sorry. Now Kaiying will introduce you to the practices being implemented to address the social emotional data the district analyzed during those days.
Good evening. Thank you, Michelle and Mandy, for starting the beginning of our journey and talking about social and emotional learning. We are excited to be here this evening to share with you how the data is being used and how we as a system are coming together to make sure that we look better than the data that we have today and not just look better, but do better for all of our students as our equity statement so eloquently states. So with that, as evidenced by the data that you saw earlier, it is clear that our students need support as well as our staff with teaching and learning of social and emotional learning skills. We were very intentional when we created our EMLSS framework a couple of years back to make sure that we braid social and emotional learning along with academics in order to impact the learning needs of our students so that behaviors or social and emotional learning can occur alongside of academics as represented on this graph that you see that Mandy had shared with you a little bit earlier. So to back up a little bit, in 2018, DPI came out with twenty-four social and emotional learning competencies that were expected to be taught to all of our students pre-K through twelve. We took that work and we did a system assessment of our audit of our whole system to look at where social and emotional learning was occurring and how it was occurring in the hopes of better aligning the work that we are doing towards social emotional learning. Through the audit, what we found was that there were many pockets of good instruction during in our district with social and emotional learning and the skills that were being taught. However, we also saw that there were gaps with regards to some of the classrooms, some of the schools that were not always doing that consistently. And thus, we had an SEL committee that was had representation from across this district come together and do a significant amount of work for the last three years. As a result of the data that you are looking at tonight, as well as some of the work that we came together to do in our system's assessment, the SEL committee late this past spring picked out, selected, and rolled out a new universal SEL program for our district called Character Strong. While Character Strong will take time for us to see the results of this intentional work, we are very excited, as I said earlier, to begin the work of ensuring that social and emotional learning is guaranteed and viable across the curriculum in all classrooms for all students in our district. As this slide demonstrates and as Mandy talked about a little bit earlier, we know that when implemented to fidelity, at least eighty percent of our students will have their needs met academically and socially emotionally at the universal level. This is why it's so very important that we start taking a look at universally, how do all staff in our buildings impact the social and emotional learning needs of our students? And that it's not just the job of our counselors or the social workers that we have in our district. So we're being very intentional about how we build this foundation utilizing all of the assets in our district, which really starts with every single adult in our building and the work that they do. And Lisa will talk a little bit later about how then our counselors, in addition to some of the universal work that they will do, will also layer on top of that to meet the needs of our students in Tier Two and Tier Three with looking at Tier Two interventions and how do we get better at doing that as a system? And because again, we know that there will be other students who will need additional resources. Those are the pieces that we will continuously continue to work on in order to support our students. But we wanted to make sure that we highlight moving forward, our work is very intentional with braiding social and emotional learning along with academics so that we get to that point where social and emotional becomes a way of doing business in our school and not if we have time, we'll add that piece. I want to spend the next couple of minutes just introducing you and talking to you a little bit more about our social and emotional learning program, Character Strong. This year, as we said earlier, we will begin the explicit work of teaching social and emotional lessons under our PBIS umbrella for all of our students in the school district who are in through twelfth grade. At the elementary level, you may hear the term purposeful people. That is the term that is used to describe our K-five program within Character Strong. Each grade level this year has made time in their master schedule to teach at least one Character Strong lesson and to practice the skills that are being taught throughout that week. Our goal this year for staff, because this is a new program and a new rollout, is for our staff to become familiar with the program, introduce the lessons to our students. Moving forward, we will continue to focus on integration of social and emotional learning competencies in more areas of the school and also to identify progress monitoring tools that will help us ensure we are continuing to do the right work. We will also be adding advisory lessons that involve high school students leading their peers with social and emotional learning at our high schools as well. That will be in the years to come. So what you see in front of you is an example of Character Strong's lesson for ninth grade. Each grade level has a similar scope and sequence with the content that is appropriate for that grade level. We crosswalked and aligned our Character Strong lessons to the DPI competencies so that the skills that are being taught are consistent and guaranteed and viable for all of our students at that grade level across the district. Furthermore, we also align the Character Strong lessons with our PBIS expectations, lessons, and within the work of the academic and career planning for all of our secondary students. Earlier, you saw on slide fifteen referencing over seventy-eight percent of our students expressing that they don't feel they belong at their schools. This is concerning, which is why we need to be intentional about connecting the data to how we develop the sequence of lessons to set the stage at the beginning of the school year to help our students develop their sense of belonging as reflected on this slide. So for the very first month, we start off at the secondary level with loves, lessons that start with belonging. How do we create a space where everyone feels like they belong? And those are the lessons that start us off the school year. Deeper into that, then we dive into what's the meaning of a name? What do I want to be called? How do I feel accepted in this classroom? Giving students and teachers an opportunity to come together and have these conversations to go along with the lessons. The work that we are doing around how do we support our staff enrolling out this new program? We know that the success of any program is dependent on the will and the skills of the staff who teach it. What is unique about Character Strong is their focus on supporting adults with implementation. They are very purposeful by using implementation science, which is all about adults and supporting their behavior changes so that students access high-quality instruction to produce the intended outcomes. Each school building has what we call the Character Strong Implementation Team this year. The team comes together at least one time a month, and during that time, they have four hours in which to focus on the implementation of Character Strong. Two of those hours come from direct support from Character Strong in looking at the implementation roadmap so that schools see where they're at, where gaps there may be, and how the founders of Character Strong can support this work. The other two hours then are dedicated for the team to discuss and talk about how to roll out that implementation to the rest of the team, the rest of the staff members within the building. So we have a total of four hours, again, minimum time that the PD time for the Character Strong team to come together and do this intentional work. In addition, we are also intentional with continuing our work with on equity with all of our staff members. This year, each principal will be leading eight PD sessions on equity with their staff in their buildings. In addition to that, we also have many, many more staff members that are working towards an EDI certification by investing in additional growth and opportunities in learning about equity that we are supporting as a district for all of our staff members who are interested. We believe that this is the work that is foundational to making sure that our staff understand the criticality for why it is so important that we support all of our students, not only in the academic realm, but also in our social and emotional learning and knowing that we can do much better for all of our students. So again, just an example of what a scope and sequence can look like with regards to our Character Strong lessons at the universal level, and I emphasize Character Strong is a universal program for all students. And then we will layer on top of that additional supports for the other students or for the smaller handful of our students as reflected by the data that Michelle shared earlier. Each grade level does have a very similar spoken sequence with regards to the DPI competencies and the specific lessons that are taught. So moving forward with our SEL instruction, we will continue to work on monitoring to make sure that we are doing the right work using Character Strong lessons to teach the DPI competencies alongside of academics. Unlike academic standards, we will not be measuring students proficiency or mastery of a specific social and emotional learning skill. However, we will also, we will be using leading data to monitor if the skills being taught are having an impact on our students or if they are being used by our students as reflected on some of the climate survey datas that we will be looking at in the future. So again, we will do this through short student and staff perception surveys throughout the year. Furthermore, we will also use lagging data such as the Youth Risks Behavior Survey, which is a state survey administered every other year to gauge overall impact and needs of social and emotional learning for our students. Our district student climate surveys will also be used to know if the work we are doing is impacting our students and helping them have overall success in our schools from many angles. We will continue to analyze the data and be prepared to make changes to our plans if the data is not demonstrating that the work we are doing is the right work for our students. As a result, we are excited about this intentional work. We're very happy to be sharing the story with you, and we continue to hope that as we move forward and we come back, we will have better news and better data to share with you with regards to our social emotional learning programs and the impact that it is having on our students. So next, Lisa Stagg, our school counselor program administrator, will be sharing about the intentional work she is doing with our school counselors to respond to our data, not only from the universal perspective, but also looking at Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. And Lisa, because we had this plan for last week, is signed up for a conference, so she is away out of town tonight, but she will be joining us remotely to be able to share the work that she has been doing and working so hard with our counseling staff on. So with that, I will turn it over to Lisa Stagg.
Thank you, Dr. Zhang. Are you able to hear me okay and see me?
Yes.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone. It's so nice to be here with you tonight. I'm looking forward to sharing an example with you about how our school counselors are using data to support our students' social and emotional learning. I'm not sure if you can see my slide with the school counselors faces. Is that slide up, Kaiying? I can't see that.
Yes, it's up, Lisa, and I'll watch and record that for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. As an introduction to my section, I thought it was very important for you to see some of the faces behind a department's name. So I wanted to share this slide with you. I'm going to start with a little bit of about our socially emotional side of our work before I get into the data, just a brief introduction. We have thirty-six school counselors working from twenty-one school buildings. And as you look at this slide, it truly is a beautiful reflection of our school counseling staff. School counselors share, as you know, and I think you know, some of the greatest moments of joy and happiness with our students, such as graduation day. I just think back when I was usher at Soren for our memorial kids walking across that stage. Their tassels are swaying, smiles, you know, hugs, and so many kind words. Of course, this was before COVID, but some beautiful, beautiful memories. And I know we look forward to those each and every year with our graduation ceremonies and all those other special moments that our children celebrate at school. On the opposite end of that spectrum, you know, our school counselors are there to provide that support and comfort during times of sorrow, great sorrow, loss, trauma, such as death of a parent or loss of students. And tragically, we know that our district has lost several precious children, and our school counselors continue to be there to comfort the families and to support them. These children and their families will forever be in our hearts, and I'm sure yours too. I just wanted to make just note of that and respect for all those children and their families. Before I get into the data in the next piece, it really is an honor for me to work for the Eau Claire Area School District and to lead our school counseling staff in this critical work and also to tap into their individual areas of expertise. By working together, we will help every student learn and grow, and I truly believe will contribute to the success of each building's school improvement plan because we are all working together, we are collaborating, we have that shared leadership, we're developing those organizational structures to fulfill our district goals. Next slide, please. In July, I attended my first system leader's data retreat. I was coming in with almost thirty years of combined work experience. I started my career as a child abuse neglect investigator for Jackson County Human Services. Did a ton of work, working to protect children, worked at the court, developing treatment plans. Of course, working as a school counselor for many, many years, K-12. I was very, very new to my administrator's role, and I think Kaiying got just a couple of weeks in. I was in that role, and I attended the system leader's data retreat with high expectations for myself. I wanted to contribute to the goals of the district, but I also wanted to take back relevant information to the counseling staff for their professional development. So I actively participated in all of the activities, creating the positive culture, you know, looking at our data, sharing recommendations, just really working to to study that data so to create those plans and those goals to find that success that we're searching for and to also celebrate the success that we have. We talked about all the beautiful things that are working in our district as well. But through all of that work, we truly had that equity lens that was a part of this work, and it will always be a part of our work. Next slide, please. You will see a slide similar to what Director Radke shared two weeks ago and a picture of our school counselors working with data this summer in preparation for the new school year. So on August twenty-sixth, I created the data protocol for our school counselors, and I learned that really that data protocol I created was based on what I did at the system leader's data retreat. So I was excited to be able to take back what I took, what I learned from the systems leader's data retreat to our school counselors. So had the school counselors work in groups, K-12 groups. We studied the students and family survey data, and then we family survey data, and then we shared out, we noted our strengths, we noted areas of concern, we noted areas of recommendations or their thoughts on what is it we're missing? What do we need to do as a district or school counseling staff? So at the conclusion of this work, each group shared a recommendation for improvements based on that data, which is a part, again, of our strong shared leadership goal within our EMLSs framework. So I heard recommendations by our counseling staff and identified a need for a K-12 cohesive communication system to share more positive messages with our families and caregivers of both their children. We will build this system and these practices together. I will be facilitating a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three intervention slash practices audit with our K-12 school counselors, which will allow us to have a clear picture of the evidence-based practices that we are utilizing in our practices each and every day within our school buildings across the district, but will also help us identify any gaps that we have in our work in our EMLSs framework, our school counseling interventions, supports, and practices framework. By following that internal audit, we are going to, I actually am going to guide our department leaders in our root cause analysis. We want to ask the question, why? What can we do if we see these gaps? Why is this happening? What can we do to fix that? And then dismantle any barriers that might be in our way of doing the work that we want to do. In addition, we are creating a progress monitoring system to make sure we are doing the right work in the right way. So we're excited about the work ahead. It's critically important, but we're ready for it, and we're excited to do this work. Next slide, please. Thank you, Kai. This is a brief snapshot of our EMLSs school counseling framework that we have on SharePoint. This is where we upgraded our equity framework, our American School Counseling Association framework, and our PBIS framework together. This is located in one site, one easy location for source access. And what's beautiful about this is if a counselor is looking for, let's say, more information on data, they simply click on the data link. If they're looking for information on equity, our equity statement is there, and it's beautifully written, you know, you created that, and just love that. We've read that multiple times, make sure that we're following our equity statement. We believe in it, we're passionate about that work. And we're also, let's say, a counselor is looking for a Tier Two intervention, we're going to focus on those Tier Twos across the board, of course, we're going to focus on all of them, but we're really going to focus on those Tier Twos. So maybe we have a group of students, high school students, that are first-generation college students, and the counselor is looking for some small group support for that. Counselors can click on Tier Two, there'll be multiple different supports and curriculums that are evidence-based. A counselor can just have it right here. Instead of looking, you know, for hours and hours trying to find the best practice, we will have it in one location. So we're excited to have that available for our school counselors. I will be providing professional development throughout the year, support for our school counselors as well as coaching, along with Dr. Zhang's guidance through that process. And again, I'm going to be tapping into their areas of expertise as well. You know, our counselors have varying specialties, I guess, it truly is a specialty, their areas of expertise, I'm going to be tapping into that too to help us reach our goals. And then as you know, like I do, that's why we're all here tonight, this is critically important work, we're all very passionate about this work. Our goal as school counselors truly is, we talk about the social-emotional learning side, is to nurture these relationships, to build on their strengths, and really strive for continuous improvement in all that we do. We're going to be working diligently to develop that continuum of equitable and best practices to meet our students' individual needs. So we're very excited about that as well. We're also going to be looking at our academic career planning needs, making sure that our children, our students are graduating, that are post-secondary, ready, we want them to be ready for the world, and we're excited about that. Ultimately, this means our goal is to make a positive difference in the lives of our students. So before I close, I just would like to say thank you to our school counseling staff that are, I don't know if they're in the building tonight or they're watching here, but just thank them for all that they're doing each and every day to support our students, to guide them, to educate them, and to love them, especially those children that need it most. Despite COVID-19, I know all of us are going to work as hard as we can to provide a great experience for our kids and to make this a positive year for them. Again, thank you for having this presentation, and I think I will turn it over to Executive Director Van Vliet for some final thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Zhang.
Before we open it up to questions, we wanted to share one last piece connected to social-emotional learning and health, and that is creating a safe learning environment. Recently, our students, teachers, and principals completed their first five-day week of school in almost eighteen months. Our teachers and principals had an incredible lift, and they are implementing mitigation strategies, monitoring mask use, contact tracing, supporting our students in quarantine, transitioning our students back that were hundred percent virtual last school year, and at the same time navigating their own personal situations through those same types of things. So we are certainly trying to find a balance with another year of these layered-on responsibilities at the same time trying to move this work. As you can see, that we're very passionate and eager about this, but we do have to move at a pace that supports the reality of our students, principals, and teachers as well. So with that, we'd love to answer your questions.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. It's nice to see some of the other side, the learning that we do in our schools. I'll open it up, of course, now to comments from members and our student representatives. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, first, I would like to applaud the efforts of the group in actually this presentation, really, I think, presenting somewhat of a story that has some not-so-good chapters within that story is absolutely fine. I guess for me, what I would like to kind of, if we could, you know, add some additional just points, because when we think about the parent-student paradox on perception of school climate is very contrasting, and so as we move forward, being able to explain really that paradox that according to actually parents, things actually, school is actually pretty good, the students themselves, not so much. Why? And so is that, is that communication amongst families and/or is that the communication in terms of how we're intending the survey to be filled out both by families and our and our students? And I guess when we look at those student comments, Slide 14 was, it was actually pretty bad, like I think that's really bad for students to come. So what does that, you know, what does it say about our particular current climate that we could have some like immediate steps there? Yeah, and then the other piece that I, I'm a little bit, I've heard some feedback, and I received a couple emails from some teachers, and I was talking to a couple students, but do we have data, as we provided this Character Strong as our immediate intervention? Did we collect any type of information as it relates to teacher readiness to actually really, and beyond actually providing one or two PDs, however many training sessions? What was that level of competency? Because I, I think that potentially has an impact on the implementation. And then, and this is just a recurring theme, so the teacher readiness piece, the district or school readiness in terms of communicating the intentions of Character Strong, the families, the students, and to staff, because I, you know, I think staff continue to be overwhelmed. So is this just another thing versus this is actually, we are trying to address actually outcomes that are currently not good? This is why we need to give a concerted effort. And I think if we can just kind of, what was our school district's readiness? So I don't remember receiving any information on Character Strong, but I also know that unfortunately, in my house, so my wife deciphers most emails before I actually get the chance to look at them, personal reasons, don't judge. And then, you know, then student readiness to receive the content, you know, I think that piece, we are about to embark, because this is actually, it is a journey that probably will not be completed, I think, one or two-year cycles, but why are we doing this? And even sharing this data actually with our particular students, this is how you guys feel. So what we believe as a school, what we believe as a staff, our intentions are, is this, this is an approach that we're trying to take to see if we can improve the current climate. So I don't know if that data is not available, is it possible to kind of track kind of where we are in terms of their readiness? Because I guess the argument would be that if students, if this is their initial exposure of, because in that Character Strong, it requires a level of actually self-reflection, but that self-reflection of students has to be guided by the individual instructors that are delivering it. And if, if it's provided as a way, this is something that we just have to do, not too many students will actually be truly self-reflective on where do I need to make certain changes? So I will, I will stop there, but it's just kind of one of those things from how do we just kind of add additional clarification pieces to our story, right? And I think that we have to explain that paradox, that the parent-student perception, because it's night and day. And then the last piece I would say is, part of the professional development that's employed, it appears that even for our staff, that there has to be, on Slide 15 or 14, as it's in the, the inspiration motivational piece, and then the communication of concern. So then what's the district ensuring that the leadership, that building leadership provides an open access environment to actually really share concerns without the feelings of somewhat of a retribution? So thank you for those things.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Johnson. A couple things, we are certainly in the first month of implementation, and you brought some great things for us to consider, so thank you for that. And Kai, I don't know if there's anything for you to share to help with his questions at this point?
And I'm not sure if I'll be able to answer the question directly, but they're good questions, and there has been some thought put into that. So with regards to readiness, so the district SL committee has been working together for over three years in getting to this point. Certainly, COVID really exacerbated our need to speed up and select a program so that we can begin the universal piece of supporting students. While not perfect, we knew that we had to start somewhere. And so with regards to staff readiness, again, this communication has been kind of a three years in the works, along with the SL committee's work and the communications with the building principals and the buildings that, you know, certainly have team members on our teams. And so certainly with communication, we know we can do better, but it certainly should not have been a surprise to anybody that we got to this point in time. But again, you know, in an ideal world, we would have taken the time to perhaps look at many more things. The committee that came together to work on selecting a program, we looked at over thirty-some programs with regards to social and emotional learning. We lift that it was required of our staff and really the outcomes that we were looking at in terms of those buildings. And so we went through a very, maybe Jim can speak to this a little bit, but a very scientific process in looking at the different programs. All of the programs that we looked at were vetted and approved through CASL as well as DPI. So we knew that we were stepping into a good place with regards to programs that produced outcomes. So Character Strong really rose to the top for two reasons. I think the committee looked at things like, Character Strong was a program that unlike many other social-emotional programs, they developed the program for secondary students first. So for a lot of our programs that we looked at, they always started with elementary and then built on. Character Strong was unique in that they started with the secondary program and really looked at how can we introduce or how can we give you a program that would be of low burden to staff with high impact for our students? Again, in an ideal world, our teacher would write all of the lessons for social-emotional based on what their students needed, but we knew that we did not have the capacity to do that work with our students and with our staff that we have right now with everything that is going on around us. And so that's how we came to Character Strong. The other piece that was really strong with Character Strong again is the implementation science. They were very purposeful about talking us through the fact that unless our adults, it's not really a buy-in, but unless our adults understand the criticality of this work, we're not going to get the intended results. And so much of their PD is centered around the implementation roadmap as well as the work that adults need to be doing in order to teach these lessons and to discuss, as Dr. Johnson had talked about, the reflection piece with students and the discussions that students have amongst one another. We are very sensitive to the fact that our adults will make or break this program and therefore the supports. We will get better as we get going, but we needed to start somewhere to support all of our students coming back into our schools and the experiences that they've had the last two years, really with COVID and everything else that's been happening in the community. So that's kind of a long-winded response to your question, but that's where we're at at this point in time, and we know we can do better.
You know, thank you, and I appreciate the response and the details, but yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Lyons? Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, is this the first year that this climate survey's been done?
This particular one, yes. We have done other climate surveys in the past, but this is the first one that we, first time we've done this.
Okay. Boy, there's a lot to unpack here, and like Markel, you know, there's some things in the student climate survey that are, you know, surprising to me. As a board member, what I hope is that a year from now, we can look at the stat and we're going to do year-over-year comparisons, right? Okay. So that's how we're going to kind of measure point A against point B. And what I was thinking about when I was looking through this, and I'm just going to take, I feel like I belong as an example, I would think that different subsets of students would answer that question very differently. And I'm wondering if we can't kind of break out some of the demographic data to understand, and I'll use freshmen and seniors just as an example as well, but there's all kinds of demographic data from race to gender to a number. I would expect that a freshman student would probably overwhelmingly respond that they do not feel like they belong in their first year, but when they move toward and into their senior year, they've made those connections, and we can see that change and that difference. And so I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I, how we tell whether or not this program is working, I think is really important, and I'm not sure if I look at a student climate survey from this year and if we ask the same kind of questions with the big roll-up in the next year, that I'm going to be able to tell, so.
I think a little too, the counselors are working on desegregating that data to get it down to, you know, action plan steps that they can work from, because data is, you're leading into a lot of conversation. And so they're asking lots of questions about, you know, who is this impacting? What can we do to help those students? And they're getting down to some, you know, small data that they can start to pinpoint what is the, why is this happening? So there is some desegregation that's happening, but, you know, we can't always present that data either because it gets to be pretty small groups, but it is very helpful for those counselors to give to that information so that they can help, you know, those students.
Well, in the pyramid that was earlier, where you're identifying different subsets of students, those services need to be directed at the top, right? So in comparing a climate survey from one year to another, what I'm really interested in is that five percent and how we've done it, that five percent, and the change agent that the programs have done to really either drive that number down or to improve it, really.
And then you take back on Dr. Zhang's slide, a couple where they're doing small surveys with students to measure the impact of our work. And so we're really working together to determine what will those surveys look like to show, are we making change over time? And those surveys become more directed and more pointed to the work that we're actually doing, and it's not, you know, the bigger picture starts to get into our actual work. So I think that will be helpful.
Thank you.
Because that data is going to help us guide next steps.
Dr. Bika?
Like others, thank you so much to the whole team for the presentation, and I really want to applaud the work on the climate surveys. I have some data-related questions, I guess some of it's already been asked to expand. These questions are, I'll direct them at the climate surveys, but they really apply to kind of any presentation that you would give us, I think, from this point forward, so they're much more general. It's a much more general. So this, I, I understand the problem with the small sample sizes, and it becomes an issue of confidentiality or anonymity. So I wonder how will we, I believe these climate surveys are going to become an important component of the OE2, for example, equity commitment. So how, how can we receive data in a way that we know where the change is happening? So for example, I would like to know, are, are the samples of parent, the family, the staff and the students, are they actually representative of our district? So do we have individuals from historically underserved or underrepresented groups adequately covered in these data? To what extent can we receive data disaggregated by groups? And some people have mentioned some already, grade, especially we're talking about race, class, gender. I would like to know, from this point forward, can we attempt to make a move where can we present data not just in single axis, so a grade-to-grade comparison, gender, race, whatever, but multi-axis, so you start picking up on the intersectionality of these groups? Because Black girls have a different experience from white girls in our schools. And that, you know, just have race, class, gender, then bring in other of those identities that are important. Can we move to multi-axis data presentation? And that would be tremendous. And then the, Dr. Johnson talked about the parent-student paradox. Commissioner Lyons was talking about change over time. I'm wondering if DPI provides a mechanism, or perhaps we have a mechanism for coding these surveys, that paradox might be caused by the fact that different families, different parents responded than different students. Do we know these students come from those parents? Do you know what I'm saying? So are there ways to connect the student with their parent or guardian? And is there a way to connect to the student data from year to year? Because you want that longitudinal change, right? And it's the only way we know that there is actually improvement. Otherwise, you're comparing apples to oranges, totally different kid, group of kids this year, different group of kids the next year. So that, that's the only way to know. So those are the kinds of things I'm wondering about, like I said, not just for these surveys, but anytime we get data presentation, if that's something we can ask for.
Yes. In this data set, we're very limited because DPI may have always more of that data. And so I'm changing, our team is changing things for next year when we implement it. So we can do more of those things because we don't have as much access to the data as we would like to be able to do some of those things. So we're starting to increase our tools too, to be able to do that multi-access, you know, at different points. So little by little, we're, we're bringing those tools in so that we can.
Commissioners, and then Representative Berg will lead next.
So when I look at this slide, and this is just me, so first of all, thank you guys, this was wonderful. And I think my fellow commissioners asked a lot of the questions or brought up a lot of the topics that I probably would have brought up. But this slide in particular, when I put my educator hat on, and if I have a student who is telling me they're not happy to be at school, I would want to ask them, what makes you, well, what would change that? And that is, for me, is, and the, a lot of these are very, they're worded in such a way that I don't feel like there's a lot of agency for the student in, in impacting. It's just a bunch of adults telling them, here's how we're going to help you feel better at school. Well, my assumption is that most of the kids taking this survey are older, and most of them probably have some idea as to the solutions to a lot of these things. And so I guess it, as we move forward with this type of social, you know, emotional learning and these, how are we, how are we increasing student voice and access to the, the actual things that we are doing in our classrooms and on a systems level to, to improve these things? I guess that's really where I'm, I'm curious is, is how are the students leading charge to change this dynamic? And how are we accessing these students to find out, well, and can we do that with this climate survey? Is there some way, I mean, I know we just get like long-winded answers with lots of words that we can't really sort out, but, you know, I, I think that the stories behind, behind these and the solutions from the students is something that I'm very curious about. That's really all I wanted to say.
One thing, obviously, student voice is a very important part of the process. And one thing I wanted to just point out, how important this right here is the supportive learning environment. So this is creating an environment for every student based on what they need. And part of us understanding how we need to improve that environment is talking with our students and understanding how we can improve our practices. And we can do that in multiple ways, and that definitely will, should be something that we do as we look at improving and adding a supportive learning environment for our students and how that student voice is tied, is directly tied into that piece of our EMLSS right in that area there. So as far as specific examples right now, we could do that right now, but certainly should be an important part of our process.
Yeah, it's not something I need, I was thinking we need, like, need examples of right now, but I'm just thinking that as we move forward, just being conscious of that or presenting us with some stories of, of how, how the students are, you know, when we see data like that, how were they impacting the climate of their school? How are they accessed by, you know, in these system development processes? How are they, and, and their voice being, you know, incorporated? I think it's an important thing to hear. Thanks.
Representative Berg.
Thank you. From my perspective, it seems that the system, like seeing it from the inside, it, it seems to be a well-researched and well-intentioned program, but as was touched on earlier, there's a disconnect between the readiness of a program to serve students and the readiness of students to be served. I was wondering if you'd had any conversations or had come up with any actionable steps to, to incentivize or encourage students to accept, accept and seek out their own help? I'm not aware.
So again, I think part of what we're trying to do here is a universal support for everybody. Certainly there have been steps along the way to, to do some of the things that you talked about, Representative Berg, and helping students learn how to advocate for themselves as well as learn how to seek help using the appropriate tools and the appropriate avenues. I don't know that right now we have any data to really say this is how we've done that, but we do know that through our school counselors and through our social, social workers, as well as many of their classroom teachers, that those conversations have been had and that students have been taught, and again, pockets of places to learn to advocate for themselves.
My first question would be, what are the plans to include the data collection so it can be more aggregated down the line? For example, having multiple options where students can go from strongly agree to strongly disagree is really helpful for getting general road input, but once we want to actually figure out why students feel the way they do, having a long answer section that does take time to sort through, but can actually get student opinions about what they feel they need to have changed in order to improve their outcomes would be very important. And I know the rest of the board feels similar about that. So what do you foresee as the easiest way to implement this in future surveys?
Well, I think the, and Michelle, you can probably speak to it more than I can, that this survey is just one survey that we're using to help guide and understand where we're at as a system. There are multiple tools that we can use, and I'm thinking that part of the school improvement plans that many of our buildings are building right now, likely will have some of the data that will help with that student voice in there, including more than just like a Likert scale. But certainly, Michelle, you might be a little.
And one of the things that we are working on is to take like that student climate survey to pull out those things that we are going to work on, work out as broader item into more specifics. And that's where then you have to start to get the input of students or staff on those more specific items so that we can take the initiative and not make the means like that, that data that we're blocking. So we're working, you know, with the school counselors, really on how to be quite more data. Lisa's been doing information planning, things that she, they're going to collect as counselors to, and have conversations around that data to start to think, oh, whatever. So it's going to get more specific for them as counselors and as building leadership teams. We're starting to have a lot of good conversations around more specific data.
And I appreciate you asking that. I'll just add that with Character Strong as a universal program, there is a big focus on student voice. You may not see it yet this year because again, as I said earlier, we're really trying to just allow the teachers to get to know the program and to be able to kind of do a cursory introduction of the program with students. But as we move along, we're going to be creating advisory teams at the high schools, at the secondary schools actually, to be able to come together so that there's that student voice of how are our students responding to these lessons? If they're not responding, what do we need to do differently? And that that student voice is also driving the implementation of the program. And so I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful that in, you know, year two or year three for sure, we will be able to add on those advisory lessons at this point in time. Again, we just don't have the capacity to start that piece. But Character Strong does recognize, as do all of us, that that student voice is critical to this process and to the improvement plans that we put together.
Thank you. So I just have a little bit of, of feedback, and really I think maybe in some ways this is more directed for you, Superintendent Johnson, just as we go forward with our monitoring reports. This is tied into our R3 and R4, the social-emotional results policies that we have. And one of the things, talking with my, both my sons this week, they were happy to tell me that SMART goals was the acronym so nice that they get to learn it twice. And I want to encourage the executive staff and, you know, Superintendent Johnson, as we go forward and we're looking for what are, what are our results, to try to set measurable goals for some of these things. And when we look at some of these things where students don't feel that they belong, I'm not going to tell you that I know what the right, we want to up this by ten percent by next year. We want ten percent more students feeling a sense of belonging. But we also know that we have an entire staff of educational experts that's dedicated to making this happen. And I guess as, from my perspective as a board member, I'd like to see the administration take a swing and say, this is our goal. And if you don't hit that goal and we come back the next year and we have to say our three is not hitting this particular item, then we can reevaluate. Did we set the goal too high? Did we fail to achieve because we, you know, are struggling in that first year because we, we had to get something in place and we need more development? Or did we set it too low and we can really shoot higher? So as we come with some of these ideas, I'd really like to start seeing more ideas. This is where we're going to go. And you, you heard me ask it of the, the high school principals when we talked about DNF, what do we expect the outcome of this to be? So that when we as a board look at it next year, we can say, this is what we had hoped for, this is where we are, and these are the steps we can do to either continue to grow in that way and, and feel successful about it, or recognize where we need to change our goal setting or our implementation. So I think that, that comes for as we go forward, that's something that I'd like to see. You know, we just had in our agenda setting last week, a discussion of transitioning some of our focus on results sections to be directly tied into sub-policies under R2, 3, and 4. And as we take those, you know, we come to, here's a focus on results, and this is our, the part of the monitoring report on English language arts for R2. Well, here's all of our statistics on English language arts, but here's our goal. You know, Manny, you showed the, you know, here's where we are on the ELA, here's where we would be when EMLSS was in, running in a healthy system, as you put it. So what's our goal then to move, how much, what percentage do we want to, and, you know, it doesn't have to be linear, right? It doesn't have to be, we're going to be there in five years, but it needs to be, I'd rather see us take a swing at saying, this is where we want to be, and be able to evaluate whether or not we made it at the end of the year. So I, I do appreciate seeing all this data. Of course, it, you know, like all of us, I think, when we see that, that student results, we say, that's not how we want our students to feel in our schools. But being able to see that helps us to recognize, how can we leverage our character strong? How can we leverage our teachers? You know, for my time as a teacher, I would like to think that I certainly noticed when I had students missing day by day. But if they don't know that I'm feeling that, then I maybe as a teacher want to think about, how do I make sure that I communicate that to students? Or how do I teach them to know that we have caring adults in our team? And our staff here, frankly, as I've interacted with them, I think are all much better teachers than I was. So I'm sure that they're, they're working on those same levels. So thank you again, and just that, that overall feedback for these presentations, like, let's, let's put it out there and let's, let's take a swing, and if we miss the ball, we miss the ball. But that way we at least know that we tried and, and where we have to do to hit it better next time. So thank you again. We appreciate everything that, especially the, the big teamwork that went into bringing this to us. Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to a monitoring of district results. Tonight, we have the full report of OE2 equity commitments. We will have the opportunity tonight to act to accept and approve the monitoring report at some level. That is, of course, part of our discussion tonight. At this point, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson to kick it off, and then we'll have some board discussion with the superintendent and possible action.
Thank you, and good evening again. I guess just to piggyback a little bit on Lord Chair Nordean's comments, it's not just the result statements, but next time we meet on the fourth, it would be OE5 learning environment. I think that data that's shared is extremely important. But anyway, for OE2, you know, with respect to OE2, hopefully the board finds that I'm in compliance with exceptions as noted in the evidence, as that is my own certification. I'm going to look toward, you know, Miski right now to, we will go through the, the I guess first would be that I had, with the superintendent interpretation, I added specific definitions, was obviously prepared to do so last week to go over that. There we go. Thank you, Maida. Just scroll down a little bit. You know, we're committed to increasing that equity among students and staff in the community through our anti-racist and anti-bastard policy, practice, and procedures. That will be the lens through which our results and operations policies are viewed. Scrolling down a bit more, as I had taken the background from our conversation, I believe, on August 16th, how I interpreted this in the indicators, the superintendent may not create, maintain inequity or demonstrably lessen equity within the district. I place that as compliant, based on the two indicators. My evaluation will reflect any lessening inequity within the district. It did not. So I would assume that if it were, I would have had that and placed that in my evidence that the evaluation that I had from this last year from the board, there were specific problem areas that I did not address, that I, that I maintained inequity or I created inequity or I lessened it. So that's why I put evidence for indicator one. Number two indicator for that, please scroll down, Maida.
I'm trying.
I'm sorry.
It's not, not very responsive to me.
Must be drinking my coffee tonight. For the second indicator, it is everything from, and I put down 2.2 through 2.7. And that's what I had for, for example, the equity plan would be 2.2. It's OE and then the second area. And, and part of this a little bit, board members, is this is Maida and me getting together, this is really our first very substantial amount of evidence to share with you, and I apologize for 190 pages worth of information in advance, but I think we'll get that sweet spot, and you can feel free, instead of embarrassing me in public, to be able to share, you know what, Mike, you can pull back a little bit on this, or we don't need as much here, but we wanted to go, like, this is what it is, and if you felt that, that we needed to pull back a little bit, you could. But I, I believe my ability to provide the indicator, subsequent evidence, compliance, and improvement on 2 through, 2.2 through 7 below would be the compliance. And I believe we're compliant with exceptions as a, I guess, as a group of those OE2s. If we weren't at all, then I would say that's different evidence. So 2.2, so to speak, even though it's not labeled as such. We'll create a plan for equity work, including annual, five, 10, and 20-year goals, and the plan will include specific targets, plans for data, research-based rationale. It will address issue, issues of access, outcomes, policy, and practices within the district. As we go through the evidence now, where there are specific PDFs, and if you would like to highlight them, or if we have the links to do so, we've got our executive team here, as well as Michelle Radke, others who have contributed substantially to this. So first off, So first off, if we were to scroll down to that equity plan created for the ECASD, each one of those indicators in the future, Maida and I will put down compliant, not compliant, or compliant with exceptions. And unfortunately, that's my mistake to, to not have that down there. For indicator number one, that equity plan created, um, it is. Uh, so therefore it is, and Maida has the, the background there. And she has that, and this is a, um, credit to Heather Grant, to Alyssa Knight, uh, to many others within the system, um, with mission, vision, our district values. And we go back to this quite a bit, um, with our strategic priorities. And you have seen this as we had shared that with you last week. Actually, prior to that, because we did have, we were ready to present this on the 20th. And if you scroll down a bit more, you know, once again, by July 2023, we, we will have done all those steps and then it shares, you know, when it occurs, with whom, who's responsible. However, in going back, and if we could go back, Maida, to the original document, I know it's kind of back and forth. The only indicator that is not compliant is the equity plan, including annual, five, 10, and 20-year goals. As I shared before, annual, yes, for the next three years. But five, 10, and 20, no. And I was asked, when will that be, when will that be completed? That will be completed by January 30th, 2022. And part of that is based on our, the Equity Steering Committee and their ideas and their thoughts. Also had Jim Schmidt, um, with our EAB group, and they had some ideas for this. I was on a webinar a week, week and a half ago with that. So they would, they would be able to assist us with that. I think that's when that indicator would be met. Uh, but indicators one and three would be complete. Again, we talk about the culturally responsive three-year plan, the Lake Shore SIP. And it, it's an example of what those targets on, our action steps. So that's an example, once again, Mandy Van Vliet, Jim Schmidt, um, you know, Kim Kohler, all, all sorts of people who are, who are assisting in this. And this is, is just an example of what one school is and what their plans are to show that evidence to you. When, when we talk about the SIP, that's what we talk about. We actually had every school share that with us individually, where the principal and maybe a staff member or two, they shared that with the administrative team from a district level. And it's one of those things not to scare people, um, but really to share with us so that we can support, we can provide some input, um, congratulate them, celebrate some of their successes, of which there, there were many, um, even in a COVID-impacted year. So those are just some examples, as well as for the viewing public. So anyway, we can, you know, we have a couple others that we won't link to the evidence, but that's, that's 2.2. And then addressing issues of access outcomes, policy, and district practice, there are more, there are more items there. I will not go into the links. You do have those, um, but those are some evidence we thought would, would be important. Next, 2.3 would be superintendent will publish for the community, annual update. That is not compliant at all. There's one piece of evidence there. We do not have it published for goal attainment in the equity plan. However, what I placed in the evidence, it, it will occur by January 30th of 2022. And, um, so once again, that's, that's what will be shared with the public as well as. The next one would be considered 2.4. Uh, we will create and maintain organizational PD structures at the school admin and district levels to promote work toward increasing equity. In my interpretation, in my, uh, decision, it would be compliant. Very proud of the collaboration and the work that's, that's occurred. Can we always do better? Absolutely. But, uh, first of all, the first indicator, PD structures to more, our equity work are created and maintained at the school level. Those are some examples there. You had seen the PD and collaboration plan, our school improvement plan system, focus areas by school, unpacking the equity statement, the equity state, next steps action plan. Those are all links that you would have. But at the school level, um, it's critical and it was alluded to in our prior presentation where I think it was Dr. Zhang had shared, you know, during PDIP days, this is where the principal is up front with an equity leader from their staff. And there's no choice. Our leaders have to do that. I've sat enough staff meetings to know that if the principal's not presenting or an AP or someone in charge that supervises me, this important work is viewed as optional. And that's not okay. And we're all different in our equity journeys, no matter where you grew up, no matter, no matter where you came from. But when we know better, we do better. And we will have some principals and directors, you know, share their equity journey and share where they are, maybe with their racial biography or autobiography. I'm not sure. But you know what? What I've experienced in, in my past district is that sometimes people surprise and will really know how they grow and they're able to share that. But the principal, uh, and, and it really does help to have support either from here at district office or with an equity leader where our staff, our system leaders had, had, gone through this learning together as 50 strong with four folks from the university who are equity experts. 110 more people had participated in that training voluntarily after the system leaders did. So if I'm over at, let's say Longfellow, and I was one of those equity staff members, equity, equity leaders, doesn't have to be a teacher. It could be a custodian, could be food service, doesn't matter. Hey, we're here together where it's Principal Fisher and it might be someone else, and that's okay. So I've been in plenty of these this past year where people have shared some, some outstanding areas where they've learned and they've, when they knew better, they had done better. And I know our administrators have too, when they had witnessed staff meetings this past year, when we went through these same types of items, pretty powerful. But you know what's happened at the school level is really critical because it's with your team, the people that you care about and that you've worked with. And that's where it's probably most, uh, most helpful. So anyway, scrolling down on indicator two, to do this at and maintain at the administrative level, our principal PD, Kim Kohler this year, um, and Mandy Van Vliet and others, you know, principal PD around EMLSS is critical. He, um, could speak to that if there are questions about that as well. Our school improvement plan system, focus areas by school, again, that's alluded to, Lake Shore SIP, again. But our equity PD for system leaders and building level equity, equity leaders, um, you know, that's, that's going to be maintained, like I said, the administrative level. There are pieces of this where we're going to have our principal meetings. Let's, let's say, for example, in October, and then there's going to be the system leaders part where we then build upon what we learned last year. So our administrators stay a bit. And part of that will be, how did the first PDIP day go? And what are, what are the things that you noticed? What are the things that you heard from staff? Not violating confidentiality, because these are intensely personal discussions at times. But what are the things that we had learned? What are the things for our next PDIP date, what can we improve upon? And then the third indicator is at the district level. Again, our three-year plan, we've started this as a system leaders group. It's not negotiable to go through this training. It's for all staff as well. We're not just doing it for teachers and then other non-classified staff. Well, you can do it later or you can do it at a different time. We're all learning about this together. Teaching and learning department with Mr. Schmidt and others had, had shared that it's, you know, that, that's how our structure needs, needs to run. And if there are other schools that feel that they would like to do a bit more, could they use a PD Wednesday to improve upon what they've already, they could. But at the district level, you know, we're able to do so. We heard that from equity advisory, uh, team this past year is that we're all on different pages and we're not getting the same definitions. We're not understanding the same concepts. So therefore, uh, switching down to, very proud of the work that, that Heather and Alyssa and others have done. Next, educational tools for the community on our commitment to equity, the meaning of equity, educational equity, how it benefits all and how the district approaches its commitment. It's compliant with exceptions. I'd like to go through this a bit. The first one, uh, providing educational tools for the community. I'm very proud of the webpage. We want the board with its equity statement, and we, we need a video for that. We had student input, student choice and voice. We've heard that a little bit before. Our Equity Steering Committee information session and presentation was back on July 15th. But we're providing this on our equity page to be able to share that with others. Our press release from earlier in the summer where we solicited interest. And then our 2122 PD and collaboration plan. We're sharing what we're doing with the community. That's compliant. Number two, educational tools for the community on the meaning of it. I believe that is compliant as well with our homepage and more steering committee information session and presentation. However, where I do not feel we are compliant, and I believe we will do so November 30th, 2022, because I want a couple more meetings with our Equity Steering Committee, is we provide educational tools for the community on how equity work benefits all students. Although I have a little bit of evidence there, it's not clear to students, it's not clear to our staff, why this is, why this work is good for everyone. Because in the, in the, uh, in the situation we had this summer where we had some people ask, well, you know, we'll look at our data here. You know what? This will, this will benefit all because we need it. Our ELA and math scores, our achievement gap is pronounced with, in, in this district. And in Wisconsin, we're 50 without 50, you know, let's face it. But, you know, high tide raises all ships. If they're 49% with ELA and maybe 50, 51% math with, with our K-12 students, that's not acceptable in this community, period. So we have to, we have to bring everybody up. Part of the example of the George Floyd message to families is showing families that, what about your neighbor? What about a person of color and how they would feel? And I do believe that that's out there, but it's not as pervasive. We need to show how this equity work is going to benefit all. And I want to get some more input from our Equity Steering Committee. We met last week for the first time, uh, really delightful group, but they're about action, which they should be instead of about talk. So that's where I have, uh, indicator number three is, is that, um, we're not compliant there. It's that exception. Uh, next one, compliant with our policy work. That's a credit to Kim Kohler, Jim Schmidt and others, uh, Mandy Van Vliet, Dr. Zhang. Areas of inequity, adopting change to address those areas, 411 should be reviewed regularly. I believe this was in August. Is that correct, Dr. Zhang?
It is, it is in progress.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have compliance there for the indicators. I gave some examples of monitoring district, uh, existing policy and practice for areas of inequity, our district policy process and checklist. I think that's been shared on a couple events with, with board members. The Great Lakes Equity Consortium Policy Analysis Tool. I learned that very early on in my tenure here. I think it was in the summer of 2020 that, that Jim had shared with me, this is what was used in the past or this could be used. And then the equity audit, those, the three teacher criteria, and then the teacher behaviors for student persistence. Number two, adopting changes to address inequitable policies and practices, student dress, EMLSS, and law enforcement officials and school resource officers. Those are just three examples. If you would be able to speak very articulately on that, some of you have already known based on our past P and G work. So proud of that, and we are also compliant. And last, but not least, superintendent will invite, encourage, and amplify the voices of historically marginalized communities in decision-making. I feel we are, uh, based on the evidence, we're compliant with exceptions. And I will, uh, just, there is one indicator. I think we do a good job here of inviting people. I think we do a pretty good job of encouraging people. But I look at students again, I don't think we amplify your voice. And I'm not really sure we encourage your voice as well. So that's something we need, we need to do, that I need to do because that's my responsibility of historically marginalized communities. We do have some outstanding groups, uh, Monk PTA, SEPTA, you know, those types of groups, POP, for example, um, where we get their, we get some input from them. Safe return to school document that the board had gotten, and it's on our webpage where they can fill out a survey. And call trick surveys, they are able to disaggregate that data for us. The same thing will hold true with our SRR3 funds where we need that input from them. We need that voice. I'm proud of the evidence that's shown, uh, there, where I think it was a, it was a tremendous step for the Equity Steering Committee as well. I don't think we amplify very well. And I think that's the, the feeling that we'll get from that Equity Steering Committee, and especially our staff members of color, um, or who are from, you know, marginalized communities. I think we're going to get that feedback from them. Once again, I'm proud of the work we have done, but I, I do not, I believe we're compliant with exceptions on that one, especially with the amplification. And that's where we are, I'll take plenty of questions and comments and write down as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Comments and questions?
And if I cannot, or, well, I should be able to because I'm responsible for it. But if there's, um, one of our exec team members would be more than happy or could provide more specific information, I'll invite them to chime in. But, uh, more than willing to take comments, uh, clarifying questions, anything of that nature. We've got work to do. I'm proud of the work we have done in the past 14, 15 months and what I've learned about the district. It's just, we need those results. And I'm partnered by the work with the OEs, for example, learning environment, OE5 coming up, and then our results 2, 3, 4 coming up as well.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I really, um, this was a, like the, quite the document. I think the, uh, the, the level of, uh, level and attempt to, uh, provide sufficient amount of, uh, artifacts to support, uh, the information, I, I, I think it's good. I, I, I guess for me, and, you know, going on this recurring theme about, uh, you know, about a story. I think recognizing that, uh, equity has not been as present as it should be for all aspects of our educational system. I, I, I think that's, that's an overarching, overarching thing. And, uh, and for me, so in an attempt to address, I think both immediate and systemic issues of inequity in our system, I would hope that we, instead of continuing to attempt to collect data, we use some existing information that we already have. And, and, and for me, uh, the, the example that's actually indicated is, uh, uh, as an artifact, that disproportionality that, uh, that, that exists, especially as it relates to over-identifying, uh, students of color, especially black, uh, black kids for special education. That's been recurring for a while. I, I don't need to see any more data, you know? Or what I would like to see is kind of, what, what are the action steps? So that could be, that could be addressed, uh, what have we done? And then are we, are we moving that needle? Cause we've been on that list actually for, uh, for a while. Or if it was presented to me and then provided, uh, uh, that additional breakdown in terms of, uh, the academic scores, the math. It actually spoke to some inequities as well. We have that. I can potentially use that to develop action steps. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, Superintendent Johnson, I really applaud your willingness to actually, uh, put this Equity Steering Committee team together. But your, your initial thoughts after meeting with them just one time, that they're really about action. I think for, uh, for, for those of us who have a vested interest in this, uh, both, I think personally and, and professionally, it's really kind of one of those things where the recurring theme, uh, has been our perception that exists about Eau Claire. Eau Claire may be aware of a problem as it pertains to equity. But the key is just to kick the can down the road. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, that should no longer be acceptable, especially, uh, where we find ourselves, uh, with some of our existing data. And so what I would, would caution, I think, I think we have enough data collected to actually take some immediate steps on issues of inequity in our system. And then, you know, long-term, some of these additional artifacts and kind of seeing how, how it goes, that we can hopefully address some of the, uh, systemic pieces that, uh, that exist. And so I would just, for me, it is, it's, it's just unclear kind of where, where, where are those immediate pieces that we are going to address like right now? And so, so, um, you know, and, and, and I, and I think there are pieces here, and what I would like, if at all possible, in some of those is that we pull those, we pull those pieces up as the indicator wants. We have, we, we, we have some data that we're able to make action steps. Let those fall under the indicator ones, uh, uh, under each one of the, uh, the, the subhags. So, and, you know, I, I, I guess for me, that, uh, if we use this example compliant with exceptions, probably, uh, probably address really that, that compliant piece immediately. But where, I guess for me, where you have that, that ECSD, ECSD disproportionality piece, that should be at the forefront. We, we have, we, we have this and that, it's there, right? And so, um, yeah, I, 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 I really applaud the effort, you know? I, 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 I think we, what we cannot do, um, and well, what will be my discomfort of actually supporting this though, if, if there is, if there's no attempt to really kind of de-level the immediacy and allowing some stuff to really say, we're actually going to kind of tackle this right now.
What I'm trying to do is, for example, with our staffing, with underrepresented groups, and I see a couple of head nods in the back there, where we had taken in examining that data, where we had the disproportionality, placing staffing there, for example, at North High for a student success coach. And here are the, so using that as more, more of an action step rather than, well, here's what we're doing. This is what we've placed in our student success at the freshman level because we know based on the data, our, our students who are freshmen, if they don't suc- aren't successful in that first year, you know what happens? They wind up dropping out, or they wind up repeating, and that's, you know, it's terrible. But that's the immediate, and we could, I, I think that's what I, I kind of get the gist of instead of that list, but what are we doing? It's that story.
And, and if, I would also say that, so you talk about the, the principal fees. I, I, I would like to actually see, because what we know about work as it, as it pertains to EDI or DEI, is that the individuals who present the information, there is a requirement of authenticity in delivering this message actually to, to staff. Is it often? But it's especially needed, the level of authenticity for those actually staff of color, who actually know that they are valued. And it should not be that difficult because we, oh, we have few staffs colored. Uh, and, 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 and so, but it also that level of authenticity for the majority to also know, this actually may, I think we're moving in this particular direction. And so I, I, I would like, you know, as we thinking about like surveys, what, what are our teachers and staff's perception of when, uh, principals lead this work? What is the perception of actually those staff who have been identified as those specialists who have contributed and taken part of the training? What's their perception of the support by those building leaders? So for me, that's, that's actionable. You can, you can actually get that there. So, um, I, 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 I apologize. I told myself I actually was not going to talk on this particular issue, given some of the feedback that I received from community members, but I, uh, 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 yeah, I, I, I just feel compelled, like I said, it, it mattered, it matters to me both personally and, and professionally. And so for me, uh, those are some of my immediate feedbacks, and I'm definitely willing to follow up with yourself and, uh, uh, your, 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 your staff and, and really trying to, uh, really make sure that, go.
Mr. Zer.
Um, I agree with Dr. Johnson. Um, I, I, I printed this out and read everything that you sent, so I, I don't know if it was too much for me, but it was a lot. Um, but it was, it, I was looking, um, I was looking for something, and I have come to under, in the Equity and Responseiveness Plan, under point six, clearly identified systems of academic and behavior supports for students in every school building with regular monitoring of data and outcomes. So, believe it or not, I think what I am missing is the academic planning component of this. And normally I fall on the laughing because he knows that normally I'm on the other side, wanting the, um, social emotional piece and the whole child piece of this. But I think what, what, what I, what we see in the, in the data is, is students struggling, um, a lot. And I, and I, I want to point to that ELA score, and I want, just as an example. Um, because I think what we have there is, what, what I want to see is the, is the answer to that opportunity. What are we doing in our classrooms that is going to move the needle? And maybe that's a story of the, the type of programming that we're, you know, curriculum that we are, are implementing, or the types of, uh, the style of teaching, I suppose this is a Jim Schmidt question. But, um, you know, what are we doing in our classrooms? How are we changing methods of, of instruction to reach these students? Well, to reach all students, but to, you know, particularly to reach our students that need some extra supports um, historically marginalized communities. And how are we looking at our systems and saying, okay, let's find historical, you know, let's find the, you know, in, in our history, there are moments where systems have been developed by populations for successive populations. Where, where are we integrating great ideas and great practices that has have historically moved the needle for these students? Um, and I think that's what I'm missing, is I'm missing that. I mean, I think the systems approach is right because I think we have an inequitable system of education in this country, period. So I think you're right to take a systems approach, but I want to see the, the, the need of it, the answer to those questions, the, the types of things that we are doing in our classrooms to, to move this, um, for our students. And I'm wondering, what's their experience now like? It is different. So that when next year we can say, well, how did that work? Right? And if it's working, great, let's do it. Um,
I think I've alluded to that previously. You may have been in the retreat when Exec Director Van Lee and Heather Grant and I were in a meeting with DPI, and they said, what's going on at the Long Middle with your EL population? Whatever you're doing, replicate it. Because here, you're in the top five percent for progress and growth. So it's answering those questions. What DPI tells you, look at something. You need to look at it and replicate it and not have everyone else say, well, I'd just like to try it differently my way. And the answer is why? It's telling the story, as I've heard so often from the board. Could it be that the DeLong staff member who's the EL teacher is just knocked down, dragged out, fantastic? Could very well be, but what about the feeder schools from the elementaries that go in there? Could they have something to do with that data too? Yes, they very well could. So what is it and how are we replicating that? So I think that, that helps where we are experiencing the success, moving the needle. Replicate it or do others than, well, I'm just going to change my practice, but not listen to what's out there. I know that Eau Claire, when they find something works, the teachers want to do that because they want their kids to be successful.
Right, and I'm happy to have things like, that's not working, we're throwing that out. We are changing that and we're changing it now, you know? So I, I just think that I'm, I was missing more of the, the fine, for as much as it was here. I was missing more of the fine detail of, of the, of the experiences, you know, of our students in the classrooms and the, and the methodologies and the, the actual steps that we are taking that will help move this forward. I, I don't feel like there's much here for me to like latch on to to say, oh, well, we tried this last year, remember? And we're doing, you know, how did it work? So that was kind of my, um, but I appreciated this packet of information tremendously. I really liked the multiple, um, artifacts for each of the, you know, of the indicators, so thank you very much.
Dr. Becca?
So I too, the, as far as overall, you know, this whole package really worked for me, especially as this is our first time through it, you know? Uh, the scope of it, the types of artifacts, how the PDF was organized, all of it, so I really appreciate that. Um, I, I have a lot of similar, I guess, interests or concerns, and I found myself really gravitating to the one artifact. That's the Equity Cultural Responseiveness Plan. And I, I appreciate, uh, of course, it's a great idea to not go too much further without input from that Equity Steering Committee. Um, however, really what I was looking for is targeting certain areas that are known to be longstanding problems as other people have already mentioned. So whether special education, discipline, participation in AP, gifted and what have you. Uh, when I look at of the, of the plan, as a three-year plan, I would like to see it slant more toward the future. It captures the past and the present well. And how I would get that slant from the future is item six and seven. Because I think most of these points, these are ongoing ideas. So how can we, how can we set the targets? I mentioned some student ones already, under number seven, that recruitment, hiring and retention. We've been talking about that for a long time, set the targets. So, and I know that you give the January thirtieth, twenty twenty, where we have the, you know, go on the five-year, ten-year, twenty-year. But this document, would, is it reasonable to ask that this document be expanded to be more future oriented than it's already been accomplished and with those specific targets that people are talking?
So as we read through monitoring report, of course, the board's job is to hold the district accountable to whether or not it is compliant with our district policy, OE two. So as I read through it and I look at the assessment that you've done Superintendent Johnson, I find myself saying, I, I think I can agree with your, with your assessment. We are compliant in many areas. There are exceptions. And, you know, the one, of course, we don't have that report yet, so of course that's not compliant. So just to settle that, I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think I can agree with your assessment. And I, I'm glad that I can do that because what I don't want is to have you and the board have different opinions on how is the district doing? And if we can agree and you have an accurate self-assessment in the view of the board, we're much better able to move forward and address issues. I want to agree with many of my colleagues, uh, Dr. Johnson, uh, the need for action and immediacy. Dr. Becca, the, the need to look forward and plan for the future. Um, some of these things, you know, some of these OEs, you're going to have the same thing. It's going to be a checkbox every year. You know, I think about OE twelve, sorry Commissioner Lyons, I know you, uh, pay a strong attention to the business end and the financial part. Those are the parts that establish, OE twelve six is maintain property and casualty insurance coverage on district property with limits equal to one hundred percent of replacement value. I almost fell asleep reading that sentence because to me it's, you hold the, you have the insurance or you don't. It should be a check mark, and if we're not compliant, I'm going to have a real problem when we get there. But that will be the same every year. Every year when we monitor OE twelve, we're going to have a checkbox for, yep, we're still insured. OE two is not like that to my mind, and I think we heard Dr. Johnson, and I think we heard Commissioner Zer and Dr. Becca talk about that. That it has to be an expansion and an acceleration and a focus on action and accomplishments every year. So for me, you know, many of you know that I, my education PhD was focused on ed policy. I'm a big believer in that policy is the way that we can set changes in motion. It doesn't mean that we don't have to work on our practice or our personalities, but that's the first step. So I look at the, the policies that you brought up for, uh, OE two point six. Uh, what I think, one that got missed was the work that was done on the policy for revamping our recruitment and retention, uh, the rules that were there and some of that discussion. And certainly I know that this is not just, you know, we finished the EMLSS this year. I know that's been a multi-year work that the executive staff has been putting in place so that it can be good. But I want to see it as a steam engine. You know, we made a lot of progress last year, more than I think we can say, at least in the, in the years that I've been in the district, seeing targeting on those things. But I want to see more next year. I want to see more steps. I want to see that action and I want to see it at top. This is not one that we can be static. So when I say, I agree with your assessment for this year, if it was this level again next year, I don't think I would because we need to be focused on it. And I, I think when I hear you talk about it, when I see the steps that we're taking, when I talk to the executive staff, when I see this district moving to act, I think the district is behind this as well, moving forward. But I just want to reflect the urgency, the immediacy and the future orientation that my colleagues brought up as we go into kind of our next phase of the night, which is to consider how we will, uh, adopt and, or accept and approve the monitoring report from Superintendent Johnson. So at this time, I guess I would entertain a motion to accept and approve the report uh, as submitted by Superintendent Johnson. And then, once the motion is on the table, then we can decide if we want to agree with his assessments. That would be the, the clean motion, or if we want, need to adjust things because the board does not feel that the assessment, uh, by Superintendent Johnson is accurate with our view.
I would make a motion to approve OE two, the Equity Commitment Monitoring Report, uh, given today, September twenty seventh.
Discussion on the motion. This would be the appropriate time to talk as a board about whether or not we feel that Superintendent Johnson's self-assessment is, uh, we are in agreement with that. Uh, you know, an approval of this motion would be to accept it as, so with, you know, uh, compliant with exceptions or not compliant in certain sections. Seeing no discussion, I will call the question. The question is to approve and adopt the OE two monitoring report as presented by Superintendent Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. We look forward to OE three monitoring report in our next meeting, as well as the first draft of OE five. Uh, we'll now move on to our end of the night. And I guess I can call it now a tradition of the board debrief. Mr. Clements, you were our third member in agenda setting. Uh, so I'm going to give you this one, and because we won't be agenda setting for next Monday's meeting, we did that last week after our previous meeting, you're going to get to do it twice in a row, but I'll turn it over to you to lead us through the board debrief for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Arden. So, um, our presentation today was, was very heavy. Um, I think perhaps, um, so in my tenure in the board, there's a lot of information. Several gravity to digest in advance of the meeting and then to, to work our way through the meeting of, um. So I'm, I, I'm still digesting myself and, and in terms of how I feel about everything that we've, that we've been presented. Um, but this is about our performance on this part and how, looking at how we feel like we did as a board on our duties and how we can continue to learn together. Um, I know that, um, starting with my, with myself, um, I had to pick and choose which parts of OE two report that I was able to really, uh, to really digest because, um, I didn't have a perhaps Fisher Zer's, uh, tenacity to print out the whole report and read it all. Um, I, I had to pick and choose parts that I felt like I'm really going to focus it on this piece and try to understand how it fits. And, um, looking for, for things that I felt like I could constructively provide feedback on because I, I didn't feel like I could get my arms around the whole thing at once. Um, and, and that's not a, uh, that's not a, I went about OE two because we're past that. It's just, you know, in terms of, there's, there was a lot to work through and, um, we, we are committed to doing that. Um, so I know myself, I could have spent a little more time with certain pieces, but, um, it's a learning experience for me this time around. Unless I felt like by the time we got through some of the conversations on some of these pieces, I was like, I, I don't know if there's anything else I can constructively say besides make, uh, make a confirming statement that of some, of what someone else has said. So, um, with that, I'd like to start over, over this way and. Um, with that, I'd like to start over, over this way and. See if you have feedback on how we can groove or how things went today.
I don't have a whole lot of feedback. I'm glad to have had this first experience with a monitoring report. Because you have your, like, what it's going to be in the future. So I thought it was, Dr. Minutel, real concrete.
Yeah, I was, uh. I was, I was really glad to see and hear this tonight's meeting. Having seen similar, um, reports in several years on the board and, uh, subsequent discussion. I'm really looking forward to next go around of this, you know. To see. How this has progressed because I have a cautious optimism. That we have a better hold on this now, having discussed, I'm discussing it. Just really excited to see if that. That there was actually made forward progress because it's been a long time.
So from my perspective, the one thing that works well tonight, one of the concerns or worries that maybe we had going into a new governance model was. Will the board prepare? Will we be ready? How can we, what do we have to do to ensure that we can handle these things efficiently and effectively? And I'm thankful for the 190 pages because that's how much it's going to, this is, to my mind, our most important operational expectation. And I, I'm, we need that information to be able to have it. And I, I feel like as a board, it was clear that the preparation had. Been taken seriously, that, that we came ready to address the ideas that were here, to deal with it. To give feedback and to stress the importance of. This operational expectation and the need for continued focus on it. So that, that felt good. I think the thing that we continue, well, and we've seen it tonight many times, is the communication between the board. And the administration on making sure that we're getting the information that we need in the way that we need it, being clear with how do we. What do we need in order to really understand what's being presented to us? What do we need in order to. Assess the district? And I think there's still sometimes, you know, we talked about the need for, for a story, for, for a. A theme, a through line with this thing. We talk about potentially having need for different. Data points or a section that maybe was missing as we read through. And I think we just, that'll be a continuous discussion and. Perhaps we'll never have a full, this is exactly how we do it every time. But I, I think that there was evidence sign of, we need to make sure that as we receive, you know, in results and in. That we continue to communicate, how do we need to get that, really maximize the effectiveness of our time together?
You know, I, I think I'm still trying to figure out this overall governance model. I, I really, I, I think Superintendent Johnson and the staff. Are improving leaps and bounds, the, the reporting of information. I think the, uh, uh, the themes should probably be articulated first. And then let's dive into actual data supporting those themes and our subthemes, but I, I, I think they're, they're doing the job. Um, you know, I, I have some, uh, uh, level of, uh, uh, you know. Levels of concerns as it pertains to, uh, to OE two, you know, I, I think, uh. Uh, just like most districts, uh, uh, across the United States. Trying to address achievement gaps, trying to address overall, uh, overall equity. Um, there is a perception that equity, uh, takes away from something or from someone. Uh, equity should be viewed in addition to. And, uh, but also should be viewed as an opportunity, uh, to service those individuals. Who have not been, uh, serviced in our particular educational system for a while. We have data to, to potentially support that and, uh, uh, yeah, you know, I. I, I guess for me, I'm not sure I will be as passionate for every, uh, uh, operational expectation that, uh. Potentially comes through, but, uh, knowing that I have, uh, uh, children that are going through this particular district. And having had the opportunity, whether it be listening to stories from our students who participated in power perception. And are hearing stories from students who were graduates here who decided actually. That Eau Claire was not a place for them to actually, uh, come back after finishing school because of their experiences that. That they had through the whole class school district. Um, I, 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 I would hope that. In this year's time, as we, we, we gather data and collect data for OE two. That we have some professionals, especially the teachers and students, uh, from all backgrounds to realize that. Uh, accepting of differences is okay. Ensuring actually appropriate opportunities for everyone is okay and that we. Have to do that in, in the work in this particular district.
Um, you know. OE 12 asset protection is going to be very exciting. It doesn't get a, you know. We haven't even gotten to that. So today, the, 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 the report was, was fantastic, a lot to think about. Um, substantive, OE two, substantive, 160 some odd pages. And for both of those things, I get excited about thinking about the future, the results and moving that needle. And, you know, Superintendent Johnson, you said it. Wisconsin is 50. Out of 50 states when it comes to an achievement gap. And as a, as an Illinois resident who's moved here, Wisconsin can do a heck of a lot better than that. And I think both of these things today are the right steps toward.
Um, what I learned was, so first of all, the presentation was fantastic. I felt like the, for the EMLSS, um, presentation. Um, it was the first time I really felt like I had to take notes because I was learning something new. Like it wasn't just being read to off a slide. It was really wonderful. Like I felt like I had like new information that made me think new things and had, you know. And there was like a blessing and a curse in that. And what I, what I realized is I'm a person that likes to like ruminate on things for a long period of time. Become articulate about something. And when I get all this wonderful new information, now I will go home and four days from now I'll be like. Ah, now I have a question, you know? So I think there's, um, I really appreciated it, um. I took, I took the most notes during that presentation, I think I've taken in a long time during a presentation. So I thought it was really well done. Improvements, I think, I think this, the, the, the length of this document, or length of this monitoring report. Where it's very important and I think it's probably going to be one of the medias. I don't think we're going to need a ton for 12. But, um, you know, I think it's going to be one of our medias reports. But I also think like we're brand, we're brand new at this. Like this was our first one, right? So we all have this like gung ho energy. To like dive in and look at it real. And I'm like, am I going to want to do that every week? Am I going to have the capacity for every? So that's just a question I have for myself of like, what will my stamina be for that level? Detail and information. But I think it will, you know, we'll win all that down as we, as we go through and figure out what we really need to feel like we've got a great monitoring report. So. I'll just be interested to follow that a little bit.
Representative Berg.
Well, I was just very excited to see that a lot of these things were. Um, I, I wasn't really sure coming into this whether or not, uh, you guys would be talking, like having these conversations openly. And I'm, I'm very glad to see that you are. Um, again, I, I appreciate the level of openness. And I wasn't expecting it, so it's a pleasant surprise.
With my two full days so far as a student representative, I've noticed that. So a lot of presentations, but oftentimes it's hard to sort out what the district is actually doing and. It sometimes appears that some of the district's objectives aren't being achieved, especially as a student. As maybe portrayed here. And when I try to go digging for answers, it. Starts to become a lot more obscure once I go down past the surface level. Future, I would like more of a focus on the district's objectives and. Circling back after giving presentations on how these are actually meeting objectives because. And while I'm not entirely familiar with the history of the board's objectives, it seems like all of these are disparate strategies that sometimes. With one another and make it very difficult for the faculty. We already have an incredibly large load to actually help the students who. Is the goal that's in the fire building.
Representative Schmitz.
I feel like that we have a lot of really strong goals and I'm really proud of the destination we're hanging to. But I really feel like we could communicate better. Through various ways, online and in person.
At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.